To the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM, please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for our Maryville Town Council. We thank you for those who have chosen the commitment to serve and those who you allow to provide us safety and health. We pray for our Chief of Police and for our Firemen and for all of those who have committed themselves among the elected officials that you would give them strength, health, protection, oh God, everywhere they go and all that they do. Bless our children, keep them safe in schools, keep our citizenship safe, and give them the grace to be able to, oh God, carry out the business of the town for the betterment of the common good. We ask for your wisdom upon them, give them the grace, oh God, of respect and honor for one another, and give us, oh God, as citizens, honor and respect for this council that you have established. Bless the meeting and let the success bring force prosperity in this town, we pray, in Jesus' name. And we all say, amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you all. Clerk Treasurer January, would you please call the role of the council?
Sure. Vice President Neal, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway. President Bella.
Here.
Five present.
Five present. We do have a quorum tonight.
Two.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to the April Employee of the Month, I'll call on Barb Anderson and Lisa to come forward to the podium, please. And your awardee also.
Cheryl.
Cheryl.
What?
Sorry, guys, I didn't know about the surprise.
She had to find out sooner or later.
Suppana, you guys can join her too if you want.
Come on.
Come on.
Jason.
Go up there.
Counsel.
You have the floor, ladies. Go ahead.
Our employee of the month is Cheryl. Cheryl always has a pleasant attitude and a warm smile for all the guests, whether they are calling in for information or checking in at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. She is always willing to help with prep work, working concessions during sporting events, and setting up and breaking down for any event. Everyone who enters our facility feels welcome when Cheryl is on duty. Staff always feels privileged to work alongside her. And with this, we congratulate you.
Yay!
All right.
I'll hug you later. I will honestly say that I'm surprised, I'm shocked, and a little overwhelmed. I didn't have a clue as to why I was being asked to come to the Town Council meeting, other than Suppana asked me to come and answer some questions with her. And I'm like, what are they gonna ask me? But I will say it's an humble experience to be acknowledged without knowing anything. So I say thank you to everyone. I enjoy coming to work every day. I enjoy working with my bonus family here, and thanks again.
All right. Thank you.
Is your certificate?
Chaz, would you get a photo with the certificate?
He deserves it.
So guys, wait up one quick second for a quick photo, and then we'll move on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, dear.
There you go. Thank you all. Congratulations, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to spoil your surprise, Barb, but a little heads up next.
Well, we did have a question, but I did lie to her. It was over.
Okay.
It was a little light. It was present.
Very good. We have no public hearings this evening, is that right, Mr. Svetinoff?
Correct.
Very good. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, register voucher approval for April 23rd, the AP register summary for AARP purchases for April 23rd, the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of April 9th, the approval of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center meeting minutes of April 3rd, the approval of the AARP Committee meeting minutes of March 6th, and the approval of AARP Committee meetings of April 4th. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mrs. Yuzlak, second amendment, Mr. Pettit, for approval of the consent agenda as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to, we do have a declaration, and it's to celebrate Arbor Day 2024. Mr. January.
Sure. Arbor Day 2024, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville that Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, be designated as Arbor Day in the Town of Maryville, Indiana, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to dedicate this day to the importance of health, safety, and environmental issues affecting our community and the children who reside with all of us. Adopted and proclaimed this day, April 24th.
Thank you, Eric. You're welcome. Beautifully done. May I have a motion for approval of this declaration, Counsel?
So moved.
Motion, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Aye.
Second amendment, Mrs. Haynes Edwards, for approval of this Arbor Day 2024. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, to Mr. Svetinoff, do we have another round of ordinances ready, Joe, to, for a committee meeting, or?
We're prepping those.
Prepping those? All right.
Cleaning the unsafe building.
Okay, we will call a committee meeting once those are in, ready for the council review.
Mr. Pettit, can I ask for a timeline on when these might be ready? Joe?
We'll target by next council.
Okay.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you. Street Department, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, they've been picking up all the branches, and I'm going to ask Mr. Stephen King to give a report on the underground tanks, which we talked about the other day.
Yes, so we, so last year, late last year, it was determined that our diesel tank at our facility was deteriorating from the inside. We had it inspected by a company. It's been abandoned for a few months now. It's still in the ground. We're coming to the end of the fuel in our unleaded tank. We got about 600 gallons left, probably lasts maybe another, you know, another few weeks. We switched over to the Wex card system.
Yes.
We did that last year with the help of Mr. Griffin. We took care of that last year. We submitted a proposal to the committee for removal of the tanks and removal of the islands and the pumps. It was about $47,000. We're re-upping that quote right now to make sure we're still in line, and we're probably gonna come to the ARP Committee and ask for funds to get these tanks removed. They become a hazard, they're gonna, they're gonna become a hazard. It could become an environmental problem if we don't get them removed. You know, tanks typically have a lifespan of 20 to 30 years. These tanks have been in the ground for 50 years now, and have well outlived their lifespan. So, once they get the quotes, we'll present to the council, probably via email, to get some type of approval so we can get this process going. I'm not sure when the next AARP Committee is, but I'd like to come before them and ask for funds to have this done.
Steve, who did you say is removing the tanks?
Company called Northern Mechanical. They service our tanks. We actually got two quotes, and Northern Mechanical was the most responsible quote that we've got. So we're re-upping with them now to make sure we're still in line with where we were at last year.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. That's the street report.
Thank you. Steve, I'll get back with you because Rhonda did call the next AARP meeting, and I'll send you that date and time.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Trista might know.
I just speak with Councilwoman Neal today. She is scheduling it for Wednesday, May 1st, at 3:00 PM. She did, though, at the time of our conversation, need to confirm that with the rest of the members of the committee, but that is as solid as this afternoon.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification. Mrs. Neal is at work out of town this evening. She did send me some notes, but it has to do with Solid Waste District, and I'll address that later in the agenda. Environmental affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, I would defer to Rhonda's report. I saw her email as well, so we'll tackle that under Lake County Solid Waste.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
And Mrs. Yuzlak, I was told you're gonna have a report for Ms. Hardaway?
Yes.
Could you please give that at this time?
Sure.
I'm not sure which committee that was for.
Thank you. Yes, we had a meeting last night, Keisha Hardaway and the committee regarding the community center. And at this time, we need a new director. Of course, we've had several meetings over that, so what Keisha is requesting is maybe going through a company that has a manager, and this manager could go ahead and work with our community center. She also talked to Lisa today at the community center. Lisa would be working with the manager once we get one. So this is all in the process right now for the community center. And thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak. Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Okay, the parks are, have all been mowed. They look very good. And we still have that construction equipment on that Diamond Park. Did you know that? And he sent, I read your email, Mark, where he was going to remove those things, those construction, what do you call them? The construction, I can't think of the name of that.
He was staging some equipment there and some, maybe some vaults for stormwater, some other things. He's gonna build about, I think it was like three houses there.
Three or four, yeah.
Yeah, Ball Diamond Park. It was approved many years ago.
Yes, approximately two to three years ago, we had him with the Plan Commission, and he hasn't done nothing.
Yeah. He anticipates he's gonna do it this late spring, he said. So we'll see what he does. If not, I'm not sure if anything expires in terms of permitting, but in terms of his stuff being staged out there, I consider that construction light at that point.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if you watched that. Keep a good eye on that one. And then with the other parks, Crescent Lake Park, they have a lot of weeds adjacent to the park. Have you noticed that? I had a call from Mrs. Johnson. She lives next door.
The detention basin there, which is Crescent Lake, just kinda like a wetland with a stream going through it, we will be mowing that very soon. We also have Stan Tech that's gonna be doing some spraying out there. They've done a pretty good job of keeping back the Fragmites, which is an invasive plant that has pretty much taken over before, but now it's, you could see across there. And then there were some trees on there that we've been systematically removing, a lot of, some of them are dead along the perimeter there, because for safety purposes, because there's fences there and things like that, we've been removing over the year or so.
When will that be taking place?
Within the next two, three weeks.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak.
That's the report.
Okay. Moving on to utility liaison, Ms. Leona Chandler Felton.
Yes, Mr. President. That committee met on April 18th, last Thursday, and we met with myself and Mr. Griffin, met with the Indiana Department of Water, and had a really good meeting, and they gave us a lot of information. We're wanting to try to get with Waste Management, I believe, and NIPSCO. So we have not set another meeting date as of yet.
Okay.
So we're planning to do that.
Very good.
Once Michael gets better.
Yeah, okay. Abandoned and blighted properties, Counselor Haynes Edwards.
Mr. President, we have an upcoming meeting coming for the month of May. We're just still working out exactly what day of the month that will be, but other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you. You can stay on the floor for your semi-quincentennial committee. I've been practicing it, and I think I got it correct, right?
Thank you, Mr. President, the semi-quincentennial committee. We have nothing to report.
Did I miss a syllable? Still?
Quincentennial.
Quincent, no, that's what I said.
He said it, yeah.
On tape, we're good. Special Town Projects, I have nothing from Mrs. Neal on that.
Mr. President, I actually have.
Oh, yes, you do. Sorry.
Okay, so from Vice President Rhonda Neal, we are working on our event. The Juneteenth movie night will be June 18th at 5:00 PM at the Dean and Barbara Center. Emission is free. You can bring your own lawn chairs. There will be a play yard for children, and food trucks available. It'll be like a night at the drive-in back in the day, so you can bring your lawn chairs and come enjoy the movie night for Juneteenth, which is again June 18th at 5:00 PM. July 3rd is our fireworks, and it'll be starting at dusk at the Maryville High School. And then on July 4th, we have our July 4th parade, and we are accepting applications. They are available online. The parade starts at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and goes to 80th, the 80th place. So please feel free to get an application if you know someone who could benefit by being in our parade. We are wanting our parade to continue to be a success. That is all, Mr. President.
And those applications are available online, I believe?
They are available online, yes.
And since the movies are free, we don't have to sneak in in the trunks?
No, no children in the trunk.
Okay. Don't have to do that. Very good. Moving on to the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Counselor Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to speak with Michael when he's back on his feet about the NIPSCO audit. We wanted to do a NIPSCO audit of the utility bills inside the center, heating and cooling, both sides, the gymnasium side and the Mike Anderson Event Center, so we need to look at that. I think a lot of the items that were put onto the punch list have been rectified and cleaned up. I don't know, Mr. January, if we have received our lease payments yet? I don't know if you've gotten anything?
We have not.
Okay, then I'll talk to Michael about that. I know he was preparing an invoice for the Boys and Girls Club on that.
Can I have Joe follow up on that? Excuse me, Sean.
Yeah, we can.
I think we should.
All right, yeah. Give.
In fact, I really think that, oh, are you not finished with your?
Go ahead if we wanna talk about this subject real quick with Joe, yeah. Go ahead.
Just in terms of invoicing, I was reading something, and I think that should really come from the Treasurer's office. Just send in the invoice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So between you two gentlemen, you can work that out.
Joe, you and Eric.
No, no, no problem. Just generate the invoice, I'll review it, and then we'll send it out to, we'll send it out to the Boys and Girls Club recipients, Chris Campbell, Matt Galeros.
Mike Jessen.
Mike Jessen, and then.
Rene Martin.
David, Dave.
Dave Hollenbeck.
David Hollenbeck.
Who's the head now of the Boys and Girls?
Rene Martin's chairman of the board. Matt's the outgoing chairman.
But there's no director yet?
Director is Mike Jessen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He took over for Ryan Smiley. So, and then as Marge alluded to, and the personnel, obviously the bigger kind of operational and staffing is the director. Do we wanna have an assistant director, program director? There are some positions there that we need to, we've got both the capital side of this facility, the physical side, and then we've got the operational side that we need to dive back into and look at that, so.
According to Keisha, that will be undecided.
Yeah.
For now.
Mm-hmm.
And we will get back on that with our committee.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on tonight to the Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District. Mrs. Neal did send me the following report, that the next meeting is May 16th. They're still accepting applications for Citizens Advisory Board members, and those applications can be sent directly to the Lake County Solid Waste Management District through their website. The Spring Leaf drop-off runs through May 2nd at Calumet Township, 1900 West 41st Avenue in Gary, or at the Lake County Fairgrounds at Crown Point. The residential compost is now available by appointment only, and it's a half cubic yard free to Lake County residents, and they can call the number 219-369-7695 to make an appointment to pick up their half cubic yard. We have no NERC report tonight. Stormwater management resources, our director is Matt Lake.
Yeah, we've been addressing some emergency sinkholes with some old organ metal pipe in town. As Steve alluded to, you know, he mentioned he had tanks in the ground for 50 years. We've had stormwater pipe underground for well over that, and so, so with that, we were systematically replacing that as we go. And keeping in line with the theme of Arbor Day, I wanna thank the company called Siltworm, they're a Maryville-based company. They had dedicated and donated 1,000 saplings to the Town of Maryville. We coordinated with the Maryville School Corporation, and we'll be planting 1,000 tree saplings within various grounds of the Maryville School, school system. And so I wanna thank Joe Moore, who is a co-owner of that company within Maryville. And we're gearing up for our orchards, our town orchards. We've coordinated with the Northwest Indiana Tree Planting Consortium. This is part of our U.S. Forest Service grant, so May 7th, we'll be doing a workshop at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center at 10 o'clock. This will be for how to plant trees and maintain trees, and then we'll be doing a practical on that at the Prusen Community Center Park at 5750 Tyler Place, on how to actually plant the trees. And so this has been advertised on our town website, and so I know Councilwoman Yuzlak challenged us to plant 500 trees, and we're well exceeding that, so we'll continue to do that and go well above and beyond. So I wanna thank you for your support on the tree, and the Arbor Day, and the, you know, Urban Forest Front, and as well the rest of the council, which is why we received the Growth Award as well from the National Arbor Day Foundation.
I gotta say, Matt, you've come through on this, on the trees. I really appreciate the work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Matt.
Very nice job.
And Mr. Lake, I really appreciate what you're doing. I also wanted to know, is there some sort of way that we could work with the town to come up with some recognition for people that have lawns that haven't been chemically treated? Because I personally don't use chemicals on lawn, because I know how detrimental it is to the waterways and aquatic life. Is that something you've ever considered doing?
That's something that town can look into. I would assume that we would wanna recognize people that wanna be, you know, eco-friendly and make sure that, you know, we are not contaminating, you know, not only our lawns, but the waterways, because as you know, when it rains, what happens to the rain on the land, it runs off into the waterways, into the streams and rivers and lakes, so certainly we can come up with something for that. I know the DNR has something, the Wildlife Habitat Program for yards and things like that, so I'd like to work together and figure something out for that.
Okay. Awesome. Good suggestion, thank you. Moving down to department reports tonight, I would like to ask our department heads, are there any department heads in the building tonight that are citizens of the country of Greece? Are there?
That would be me.
Oh, it is you. Tikkanees. Tikkanees. Why don't you give your?
Kostas? You really, you really had to ask that, Mr. President, with Kostas?
Kostas, I pleased you.
Well, he has a dual citizenship, that's kind of a big deal, and it's new, so please share.
As many know, I'm the first generation born here. Both my parents are born in Greece and married in Greece, and I was born here. And today I became an actual dual citizen, so I received my Greek citizenship as well, and I put all my stuff in for my passport. Thank you. So looking forward to claiming some old property that I have there, so I might have a place to vacation later on.
That's great. And what's new in the police department chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel. I just wanna report for April so far, we have had over 1,700 calls for service. In addition to those 1,700 calls, we have had 403 traffic stops, over 50 arrests, and one of the things that I wanted to point out was an incident that took place on Saturday, April 20th. Approximately 8:15 in the morning, one of our officers was notified by Gary Police Department, and it was advised that their LPR system, which is their license plate recognition system, hit on a vehicle that was coming southbound on Broadway towards Maryville. The vehicle belonged to or was registered to a person that was wanted and had several felony warrants. So the officer took it upon himself to use our LPRs and try to get an idea of where this car was going throughout the day, and about 10 o'clock in the morning, about two hours later after he got the initial heads up from Gary, he was able to locate the vehicle at 73rd and Broadway. So he stopped the vehicle and was able to safely apprehend the person that was driving the vehicle, who did, was confirmed that he did have a warrant. And while it might sound like it's kind of the everyday job, this is not a not-so-very-nice person. He had a warrant for strong-armed robbery, armed robbery, and criminal confinement. So this guy has a pretty violent history with how he treats women especially, and this is a, this is a win for all of us, because he was taken off the street. So not only is he keeping Maryville safe, he's also keeping everybody else safe in the county. So I felt that this was necessary to tell everybody, because this was a really good example of teamwork and the relationships that we have formed now with our neighboring communities. We didn't really have them in the past, but now everybody is working together, and I think it's a great thing. Also, this is a testament to our license plate recognition readers, how good they are, and that we're sharing information with the other communities as well. One of the other things I wanted to add, we just, it's been confirmed, we are joining the Sheriff's Department and one of their task forces, and the way that that works is we're giving up one of our officers, in return, we're gonna get seven officers. So what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be doing a lot of proactive stuff in Maryville. Of course, our officer's gonna be helping in other communities as well, but all this, anything that comes in via tips for suspicious activity, from drug dealing to anything else, we're gonna be investigating it. So we are tight on manpower, but this gives us an actual opportunity to do a lot more proactive stuff and gives us another option, so it's gonna help out. You'll be seeing a lot more activity with the Sheriff's Department in Maryville in this, in this union. August, we don't have, I don't have a confirmation on the date yet, but August is looking like we're gonna have our next woman's self-defense class. I know that was a big hit for a lot of people. The ordinances, I'm excited, waiting for them to go through tonight, so this gives us an extra tool. We're looking forward to start using them. And the last thing I wanted to leave everybody with, I just attended Chief School, which is a mandated class that every police chief has to go within a year by the state of Indiana, and talking with about 40 other chiefs that were there. and talking with about forty other chiefs that were there, I didn't feel so bad because it seems like everybody is facing the same problems, and everybody doesn't have a solution yet, but networking and speaking with everybody, I think, uh, everybody's determined to work together and try to come up with some type of way to curb some of these issues. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good work. If you need a travel companion to go and check out your properties in Greece, please give me a call.
Yes, sure.
Moving on to Planning and Building Department, Ms. Sheila Schein.
Mr. President, I just have, um, the Planning and Building Department, of course, continues to issue planning and building, building permits for pools, sheds, swimming pools, um, new garages, but once again, I do admonish all our citizens to please make sure that your, before you give your contractor money, please make sure that they are licensed in the town of Maryville. We constantly have to get calls about people that are working without a permit, you go out there, Matt was out there on one other day, somebody pouring concrete, um, terrible job, the, they took two thousand dollars from the people, so please do that. Um, and also, Mr. President, tomorrow we will be issuing a demolition permit for seventy-nine oh five Broadway, which is the Geisem Funeral Home across the street.
Ah, very good, thank you. Progress.
With development to come.
Yes. With future development coming.
Or future development.
Work on that. Street Department, Mr. King.
So we're very busy, we're, uh, um, right in the middle of our spring cleanup, um, it ends on, uh, April twenty-ninth. Um, residents can bring, uh, materials to our facility, uh, dispose them in our dumpster, we have a gentleman that'll check you in there. We're working on that, we are diligently working, um, with the town landscaping and the planters on Ninety-third Avenue, we've almost got them all cleaned out, they'll be done tomorrow. Um, we'll be starting planting maybe end of the, end of the week, um, probably next week, all the hanging baskets have been ordered, um, the, uh, the nursery won't release them until they feel it's safe, and we're not gonna get any more frost, um, so that's in the works. Um, what else, so we've had our street sweepers out for the last couple of weeks, cleaning up the town roads from all the, uh, all the winter debris that's out there, we have two, two sweepers out, um, every day, um, and also our community crossings projects have started. We've started off, uh, Eighty-third and Ohio Street, um, out towards the Panhandle area, and then our contractors can be moving to Sixty-first Avenue, where we'll be doing, uh, concrete work and also pavement restoration.
Steve, could you touch on the speed humps, please, and when those are gonna go back in and when the new ones are gonna be, uh, delivered?
So that was my next thing, so the speed humps, I actually got a phone call today, they're gonna be delivered, uh, to our facility a week from Friday, so we'll have the new speed humps in, um, I contacted our contractor who did the installation last year about putting in the existing ones we already have, he's working on the schedule right now, of course, you know, we don't predict any more snow, so we feel confident that we can, we can get them in the ground, so they'll be going back in. Um, as of right now, the first place they're gonna go back in, Foxmore Subdivision, uh, that's a major problem out there, it was last year, that's where we started, so that's where the first ones are gonna go back in as of now. So I'll be asking, um, Kost and I will probably be talking with, with the council about where, where these speed humps would like to go, it's gonna be residential areas only, so we'll, we'll, we'll be in touch and we need, we'll get some locations.
Steve, I've already gotten a call from Tim and Elizabeth Congress at Seventy-seventh and Madison, so you and I will definitely have to have a talk.
Send me any.
He's already had a car in the yard again.
Well.
Mrs. Usek, you and I will have to discuss getting, uh, one put in heritage because I was representing that neighborhood prior to the change.
Right.
Now you are, so I'm probably gonna have to give you one of my sets to handle that.
That's good.
We'll get, we'll get together.
And then tanning place too, Steve.
We'll get a list together.
Lot of speeding traffic.
There's a lot of speeding everywhere.
Yes, I know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that everything, Steve?
Yeah, I hope so.
Thank you, I'm moving on tonight to general orders, uh, we have first reading ordinances, ordinance twenty-four dash eleven. It is an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code in order to revise certain provisions and to establish a new special revenue fund to be styled, the Special Street Capital Non-Reverting Fund of the Town of Maryville.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Usek with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of ordinance twenty-four dash eleven on first reading. Trista, did you have any other information about this fund, please?
If you don't mind, I would use Mr. Griffin's microphone.
That will be just fine.
Yes, he was the. He was the author of the more verbose resolution ordinance, excuse me, than you have than I would have drafted, but it is.
Robust.
Absolutely legitimate. You will recall that we have entered in last September? Last June, excuse me, the contract with Milestone, uh, to use a site for some dumping, uh, that they will then be paying the town for. So this ordinance, in short, then establishes the fund for that, it establishes, uh, the reason for the revenue, as well as the reason for the expenditures, which you see listed on page two, I believe it is. All of that was, uh, drafted with discussion with Mr. King and Mr. Markle, um, to fit the contract, to fit the uses that the town has. Uh, we did think it was important for this revenue to be captured in this separate fund so that, uh, Mr. King and Mr. Markle can use it to build for some capital expenses in the future, as opposed to a revenue line just being added to the general fund which could get easily, uh, lost or, um, maybe not kept as intended for this future capital, uh, savings, so I think that covers the intention of, of the request and the reason you have the ordinance.
And how's the activity been with, um, them using the property, using our?
Um, it's, it's, it's been slow, we entered the, into the agreement in June of last year, it was never used last year. Um, it's just started being used recently, within the past couple of weeks, um, they've had a tree removal company out, they've removed some trees, um, they push some material around, they've, they've, uh, cleaned up our site, um, which is part of the agreement, um, they're working with us, you know, it takes us, you know, it'll take us three days to, you know, to push off what they can and, you know, in a couple of hours with the equipment they have, um, but so far, so far it's been fine.
Mr. January, you're on board with this, creating a special fund?
Yes.
Okay.
We would ask, if I might add to, I'm sorry, I forgot, uh, the council to consider suspension of the rules tonight, there is some revenue waiting, uh, in Milestone's coffers to pay to the town, and if you are so inclined to suspend the rules, pass it on second reading tonight also, then Mr. King will let them know, let Milestone know that they may send the check to us, and the fund can be put to use.
We'll consider that, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Sure, as a point of order, since we have two people that are, um, listen, I don't have to read those, uh, announce those people.
No, it's been established.
Okay, alright, thank you, alright, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules to read ordinance twenty-four eleven on second reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
Most from Mr. Pettit, second by Mr., Ms. Hayes Edwards, to suspend the rules to read ordinance twenty-four dash eleven on second and final reading. Mr. Svetnov, are we within our rights with only five members present to suspend rules this evening?
Correct, you are, as long as it's a, a, um, unanimous vote.
Very good, questions or comments on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, Mr. January.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, we will suspend the rules tonight to read ordinance twenty-four dash eleven on second reading. Is there a motion from the floor?
A motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Usek, motion? Second?
Second.
Chandler Felton, okay. Thank you. Open for discussion. Hearing no discussion, is there public comment on this motion on second reading, twenty-four dash eleven, establishing a new fund? Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Mustard, two oh one, East Sixty-eighth Place, um, this second reading is out of order and not in line with our, um, municipal code. You need to give a seventeen-two hour, and you need to have unanimous consent from all board members, all town council members are not present, you should not be proceeding with this.
Mr. Svetnov?
Uh, statutory rule, uh, rules on this, Brian, statutory rule reads that a motion that can suspend the rules can be done by the members present, so we had a unanimous vote by the members present to suspend the rules.
That's fine, I just wanted to publicly make my objection, that's all, it's not.
Is that not included in Roberts Rules Two? Attorney?
It's, it's included, it's included in the statute, it's statutory code.
Okay, I understand that.
Specifically discussed.
I thought maybe it was included in the Roberts Rules Two, just so he would understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Roberts Rules would not follow the statute, that's why I'm saying in our ordinance is also stated, but I'm, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, so I'm just, I wanted to voice my objections, it was on the record that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I promise you we're gonna look into it, and if that's accurate, then we'll redo it, okay, if it needs to be done. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to the second reading ordinances, ordinance twenty-four dash oh seven, it's an ordinance of the Town of Maryville amending Town Code, Chapter Three, currently entitled Alarm Systems, and to be re-entitled Police Calls for Service, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
So moved.
This is the one that we, uh, refer to as the False Alarms Ordinance. Motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Second by everybody, Chair recognizes Mrs. Usek, uh, for the second. Open for discussion. We've already done the, uh, public hearing on this ordinance at the last meeting, is that correct, Mr. Svetnov?
It is correct.
Very good. Any other comments from the council on ordinance twenty-four oh seven? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Oh, yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, motion carries, chief? One down. Moving on tonight to ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight, it's an ordinance concerning real estate in the Town of Maryville, which is used or permitted to be used by the owner for illegal activities and declaring the same a public nuisance, this is what we refer to as our nuisance ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Most from Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usek for approval of twenty-four dash zero eight on second and final reading. Any discussion by the council? Again, for the record, this was, uh, held in public comment at the last meeting, we'll move on to the vote, Mr. January.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance on second reading, twenty-four dash zero nine, it's an ordinance amending the Town Code Sections twelve dash ninety-one, entitled Parking in Yards, and twelve dash one eight eight, entitled Definitions, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Chair recognizes Counselor Haynes Edwards for the motion, second, Mrs. Usek. Any discussion by the council? Again, for the record, this was on public hearing at the last meeting. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, motion carries. Again, on second reading, ordinance twenty-four dash ten, it's an ordinance amending Town Code Sections twenty-one dash one seventy-two, entitled Zoning, Off-Street Parking, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof, did we just do that?
So moved.
Second.
Ones in yards, okay. Motion by Mrs. Usek, I think, right?
Yes.
And second by?
Shawna.
Shawna, Mrs. Hayes Edwards. Open for discussion. Hearing no discussion, a public comment was taken care of at the last council meeting, Mr. January, would you please call the roll, this is what we refer to as off-street parking.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, that motion carries, chief, Nucis, you have your tools in your toolbox, please use them.
Thank you.
You and your code staff. Tonight we do have a couple of resolutions before us, we have resolution twenty-four dash zero nine. It's a resolution providing for the transfer of appropiation balances from and among, among major budget classifications in the municipal Cumulative Capital Development Fund as requested by the proper officer and forwarded to the town council for its action pursuant to Code six dash one, point one, dash eighteen, dash six. The amount is eight hundred dollars, okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Usek, second by Counselor Haynes Edwards. Questions or comments on the motion? Trista, anything to add on this eight hundred dollar transfer from the parks improvements to parks other equipment, in that effect, is zero.
I apologize, um, interim town manager, Mr. Griffin handled this item, and I don't believe I know anything about it.
Uh, it's a very simple transfer and a very low amount, so.
Yes.
We'll move forward. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, this voice vote is proper for a resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution twenty-four dash ten, it's a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the twenty-twenty-four budget, General Fund, Department Five, Local Road and Street Fund, and Maryville Fire Territory Fund. The decreases from, uh, general clothing and local road and street uniforms and fire department volunteer clothing, I believe totals forty-four thousand three hundred dollars, the increase going into different lines with the same titles, uh, is forty-four thousand three hundred dollars, in that effect, is zero.
So moved.
So moved.
A motion by Mrs. Usek, seconded by Ms. Chandler Felton?
Yes.
For approval of Resolution twenty-four dash ten, it's Resolution Transferring Monies. Questions or comments? Anything to add, Trista?
I did assist with this one, it simply is moving the contractual-type purchase of uniforms and clothing to the three hundred series where it rightfully should be paid for. In the past, a lot of it, as you see here in these three examples, were kept in the one hundred series, which really should be reserved for payroll, so, uh, you will still see a clothing line in the police department, for example, for clothing in the one hundred series because the officers receive an actual stipend through the paycheck process. These amounts that are transferred down are for purchases that town makes that then is given to the employees for the embroidered clothing or, uh, various pieces of, uh, clothing-related equipment that they, uh, use.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to old business, I do have one item under old business tonight, I'd like to present, it's, um, it's a confusing email I received from, I think we all received it, or most of us did, from Jennifer, um, Weber at the Holbert Humane Society. Chief, I need to ask you, she's stating that we took a tremendous amount of dogs there last year and didn't pay them for anything, is, is that the case? Can you help clarify this, this email we received from her?
I see, I received the email as well, um, I didn't get it. I don't even think, I, I don't think they took one dog from us from Animal Control last year, what it is, is all these dogs were surrenders from Maryville, or allegedly from Maryville. What it is, is all these dogs were surrenders from Maryville, or allegedly from Maryville.
Okay.
I don't know where they, you know, if they were coming from the town or they were coming from elsewhere, but all these dogs that we have been, received this email from were not any of the dogs that Animal Control or the police department took in.
So these dogs weren't taken by our own animal control people or code enforcement at all?
No.
These are people that go there and just say, "I'm from the town of Maryville, I don't want this dog anymore," and leave it?
Correct, it was dogs and cats that they were taking and leaving, correct. As a matter of fact, several dogs that we did try to take there, they did not have any room to accommodate us with, so we didn't, we weren't able to take any of the dogs there.
Okay. Chief, what do we need to do? Do we need to get Ms. Weber here for a meeting, get everybody in the same room at the same table and get this worked out?
Yeah.
Which kind of alludes to that we didn't help with any expenses here, but if we know nothing about it and nothing to do with the town, then we wouldn't help with those expenses, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And just to add to that, Mr. President, they, there is, I recall, a few months back, there was something on some of the social media pages where people were trying to figure out what they could do with their dogs or their pets, and they were telling them, they were suggesting, telling them that you're from Maryville and they'll take your dogs. And that was to various humane societies, that wasn't just the one in Holbert.
Okay. So this is still a big problem, isn't it?
It is.
Any other input from the council? Anyone from there with this issue? Okay. Chief, why don't you and I talk offline here and we'll decide what we need to do and maybe talk to Jennifer, get her straightened out?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'd like to add something else to the old business.
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to have the Maryville court remain open.
Okay, I'm not quite sure that's a proper motion. Do you want to make a motion that we take steps to do that, or that we? I don't think we have the authority just to say that and then vote on it.
Well, we would have the opportunity to make a motion to say that that's what we want to do, correct?
Is that what your motion is, then?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
Second.
He? Second by Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
So a motion to, to take the steps to keep the town court open?
Yes.
Is that, is your second stand with clarification? Joe, is the motion proper?
Yeah, I mean, it's a motion.
Okay.
Really, probably what we should do is if there's gonna be a position, a position by certain councilmen to go ahead and do this, there should be an amending motion that counteracts the one that we had already passed closing the court. So at the end of the day, there has been a motion that has been brought forward before, but not brought forward to the council affairs committee, nor on the floor.
It needs to be by ordinance, doesn't it, Joe?
Well, since it was, since it was closed by ordinance, if it's gonna, if that ordinance is gonna be amended, it should be amended by ordinance.
Well, then, can she go ahead and change her motion to an amended motion to try to keep the courts open? Since it's already been closed, how about an amended motion?
Well, it actually, I would think, Joe, an ordinance needs to be introduced in committee, at the council affairs committee, with an ordinance number, needs to be written out, what the desires are to reopen the court.
Well, to reestablish.
The committee makes a recommendation, we present it, it'll be on first reading like we did the other ordinances in the past years.
Okay, did they have an ordinance to close the court?
Yes, we did, we voted on it twice.
Now, now you want to amend that ordinance if we want to go ahead, right?
In essence, what I think everybody's saying, well, what certain councilmen are saying here tonight is you want to reestablish the court.
Yes.
You want the court back into full-running existence, correct?
Yes.
Then that would be done, then that would be done by formal ordinance. Court was established by formal ordinance to begin with. It was then closed by formal ordinance, so to reestablish it with good form, you should reestablish it by formal ordinance.
Okay, it should something that's questionable, or it should something that's definitive?
That's definitive under state law, to go ahead and you want to reestablish the court, it's gonna have to be by ordinance. You can go ahead and act on your motion tonight if you want to, but to really reestablish the court has to be done by ordinance. And again, there's, somebody had delivered to the town manager's office before a ordinance reestablishing the court. That would just have to be transferred to council committee and then from council committee brought forward to the floor.
Okay.
Well, maybe we could act on the motion tonight so we could have it in the minutes to show how we voted. We can do that? Just to act on the motion tonight?
I think it would be, I think it would be more symbolic, but you can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Well, you've got, you've got a motion and a second on the floor, you gotta take action.
Yes.
One way or another.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. President?
Any other discussion? Hearing none.
No other discussion, sir.
Are you calling for the vote, Mrs. Uselak?
No, I'm not, you are.
No, I mean, you can.
You can't call for the vote.
Mr. January, go ahead, let's call the roll.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
No.
President Bella.
No.
Three in favor, two against.
Three to two. Motion carries.
Does Eric get a vote when it's like three to two and it's just?
No.
I'm a tiebreaker.
The motion passed.
Tiebreaker.
Now, Mr. President, under old business, I'll take the lead as chairman of council affairs. This ordinance, whoever is going to present it, Joe, will you have the other ordinances? We have a planning commission workshop, she said, on, I believe it's election day.
It's the day after Wednesday.
Are you gonna move it to Wednesday?
It's, it's.
All right, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call a council affairs meeting to give enough time, Joe. I'm gonna call a council affairs committee for five o'clock on May eighth before the planning commission meeting. So this ordinance and any other ordinances will be presented, committee will make a recommendation to the full council for the May fourteenth meeting, Mr. President, is that a good timeline?
Sure. What time did you say?
Five o'clock on the eighth.
Thank you.
Do we have another meeting that night?
We have planning commission at six-thirty, so we'll have an hour and a half to talk about it.
That's why I'm asking, okay.
Moving on tonight, we have.
I have one other old, kinda current business, Mr. President, Steve. Steve, any updates on, and a lot of people have probably driven through it because it is obviously the worst intersection in the town of Maryville grading out at a level F. What do they plan on doing with thirty in Mississippi as a part of this resurfacing? Have you heard, talked to Endot or anything? It's getting real bad.
The only thing I know as part of the resurfacing is it will be resurfaced.
And they're doing it at night, so they're going from fifty-five to fifty-one, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
What they're calling resurfacing, is it the patchwork they're doing that are allowed to six?
No, no. So you're just, you're just in the first stages of it. So what they do is they, typically you patch the road first, and then you, then you, then you mill the road off, and then you resurface. And by patching first and milling, you lose some material you've kind of already paid for, but in the end, it'll be a much better ride. I know it doesn't seem like that now, I mean, I get calls every day about it.
Sure.
It's not gonna improve the level of service.
They, I mean, they were left, they were left high, they know that, I mean, I hear it every day, wanting to know what we're gonna do about it, well, we don't have jurisdiction over that, so, but it'll, in the end, it'll be much better.
Very good, thank you, Steve. Moving on tonight to public comment, if you have a public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Charlotte King, address twenty-seven forty-seven West Sixty-Fifth Avenue in Ensbroke. The first thing I want to say is we got the no parking signs on our street, I think they were put in yesterday, and I just want to say thank you, hallelujah, appreciated, Mr. King.
You're welcome.
And our councilwoman, Ms. Neal, we have been wanting this to happen, now we just hope that the neighbors will abide. I do want to ask, how long do they have to move the vehicles, because they're not moved yet? And are they, if they do not remove the vehicles, are there fines, and if so, what are they?
So they, so the parking sign, so they've gone up, so they, they should not be parking there because it's posted, no parking. The fines and things, I'd have to refer to our police chief, I have no idea. I mean, it's, they're posted, so it's enforceable, so they should not be parking anything on the street. If that, that, those were, those were installed as a matter of health and safety.
Yes.
We have, you know, issues with first responders and, and things getting through there, that's why they were put up. I consulted with the town attorney before they were installed, and now that they're up, I'm assuming they could be enforced.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it tomorrow, and if you keep having repeat offenders, I think we're just gonna start impounding vehicles.
Yeah.
And the second thing I did want to ask, we have, my house is right on that pond, that retention pond, and we have many, many muskrats that are burrowing under, and we are losing part of our yard. Some of the trees have actually fallen into the pond because the rats have burged so deep that when we get heavy rains, the water collapsed because of the holes. And they are getting very bold now, where they are actually coming up and coming up and sunning and whatever they want to do. But they multiply really fast, and they are tearing that pond up and our yards. I would say from the time we moved there, we've lost about ten to twelve feet of the property off into the pond. The pond is bigger than what it was when we moved there, and it's getting worse every year, and I want to know who can we call, who can we get out there to get rid of the muskrats, or what can be done for pond restoration, like maybe putting rocks or stones around there, you know, to avoid the erosion? And I know we're gonna get some erosion just naturally from a pond and that, but it's happening really quick with the help of the muskrats.
Does your HOA own that pond?
We don't have an HOA.
The developer still owns the pond.
Well, the developer was.
Yeah, I called and left a message for you, Charlotte, earlier today. I called and left a message for you earlier today.
Okay, okay, okay. Oh, you did call and leave a message?
Yeah, we do have a trapper that we can use, and maybe we can, sometimes we can step in on those situations and then backbill the owner, which in this case is the developer still, and their attorney. The developer, I believe, passed away.
Yeah, that was Fern, Fern Washburn.
Yeah, so they're still in the state there, there was still some money in the state, so they've been using that to kind of do some maintenance over the years, like minimally, but we can, we can step into that and probably have Tom Larson, our trapper that we use, to trap the muskrats, and then backbill the now owner, well, the owner, which is the deceased developer, which is now the estate for that, so I did leave a message for you earlier.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't get that. But is there any way they can, I mean, can you tell us how we can stop the erosion? Can we get rocks put there, or, you know, is there any grant or something?
It's really a very shallow detention area.
It's very shallow because of the muck.
You know, so doing some kind of shoreline, like riprap or anything, wouldn't be really worth it. I know before I had some contractors look at that area, and they were willing to maybe convert it into a dry basin, but since it's part of the association, you have to get a consensus of everybody around there, because we always have contractors looking to put fill in areas, because they're digging out areas, and they want to put fill in areas, and they can do it in a way that's, you know, a little bit more easier to maintain and manage. Because of shallow body water, you might get mosquitoes and all kinds of other things that you're dealing with during the season. So certainly, if there was consensus amongst your ways, we could certainly do something like that, but we had, we had looked at that before for.
Right, because we don't have an association, you know, like I said, and then.
That's really, yeah.
Yeah, and my concern with filling it in with whatever, because it's pretty full right now with a lot of muck.
Yes.
You know, from the stormwater drain coming in. And filling it in, you're gonna still have water coming in on dirt or whatever.
But when it drains down, it'll be dry, so it'd be like a mullible basin, so at that point, it would be filled to the invert of the outlet of the pond. And, but certainly the muskrats, getting rid of them could, that will help at least reduce the amount of damage on the shoreline, which is encroaching probably on part of your property possibly at that point. Yeah, that's, that's something.
So is, would that be an annual thing? Because they, every year, you know, around the same time coming into the spring, they start burrowing and multiplying.
There's more, more of a permanent resolution coming, we're looking at this with a fee study for residential detention, so stay tuned for that.
Okay.
Sure. I just looked it up and just looked up what are the natural predators to muskrats? And I know we have these around here, snapping turtles, large fish, I think, just closed. So, but if we just put a large snapping turtle in there, it may eat them.
Well, that would be fun, we do have some turtles, we have turtles that's in there, we've had turtles in there too, but the problem in our pond is that it is so full of muck and algae, nothing really can live in there other than something like, you know, but the muskrats don't live in there because they can't stand in the water forever. But we don't really have any, any animals, no fish, they can't, they can't live in there. It's, it's muck, it's looked like black tar in there because of all of the mud that ran in there when they started building those other fifty-eight homes some years ago. So it's, it's like this much water from the top, right?
Shallow basin, it's really shallow.
It used to be like nine feet in the center, but it's probably maybe a foot.
Well, you know what, Matt, could you just check it out, please?
Yeah, we're already in the process, we're having Tom Larson getting it on his schedule, and like I said, we'll just bill the estate that owns it now.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Ryan Messarge, two-one, East Sixty-Eighth Place. I would like to re-bring up the matter of honoring Tiffany Thomas as employee of the month. She does a lot of hard work, I think celebrating her would be an awesome thing to do. That segues into my next comment. The last time I was here, I asked for code enforcement, especially Tiffany, to get ballistic vests for protection, and Mr. Pettit said that we were gonna step up and do that. What's the status of that? Have we located the money for it?
Chief, do we have any vests in the back?
I do not have any vests, no.
All right.
They're all, they have to be custom fitted to.
Custom fitted?
Yeah.
All right, well, you take that, and when Michael gets back on his feet, he and I will find the money to put that order in for Tiffany, all right?
I appreciate that, and one last thing, I'd like to talk about blight and blight court. I do want to thank Mr. Pettit, who has been religiously coming to the blight court and the rundown house at sixty-nine thirty-five, I believe it is.
Thirty-five or forty-five?
One of those lucky numbers.
Thirty-five.
We are set, and we're taking steps towards the demolition, and it's been a fight, but there seems to be some progress. Things have been posted, and I want to thank him and Ms. Haynes Edwards for acting on the blight. It's a first, a really good step towards making our neighborhood and our town better looking, so thank you.
So can I comment on that, Brian, just real quick? So I just sent out this morning a request for crows from, from two contractors for the demolition of, of that property. So the requests have gone out.
That's perfect, there's plenty of neighbors with gasoline who have matches. You're ready to go too.
I think we're gonna take the safe route.
The fire chief didn't hear that, Brian.
Good evening, my name is Gene Velasco, as you all know, I'm the judge of the Maryville Town Court. I appreciate the support that has been shown to the court by the council people in this matter. I'm not sure what exactly we did today, but what I'm hearing is they were asking to resend the prior action that was under the ordinance that's still pending and unfinished. I think that Mr. Pettit has suggested that a subsequent ordinance would have to be submitted, which I think, we have one prepared for that. I do want you to know that if you decide to do that or if I'm not successful in the current litigation, that all the ordinance that you have approved will now generate money for the town in as much as, as of February or the end of January. We've, we've now exercised my authority under state law to do the ordinance traffic bureau. And so the town attorney that you have now sets the agreement with the people or fine that is imposed, and you approved a bunch of fines in the past, so those are the ones that are being used. And all that money should be going straight to the clerk's office now, even if they pay it through, through the town clerk, through the town court clerk. I think that's one of the things that you guys were concerned about. I wish my lung capacity was better. In any event, this is one of the positive things that you can do. The negative thing would be that if ultimately the court is closed, you will be then in a situation of having to acquire a place and would probably be county court by negotiating a contract with them to basically handle your ordinance violations and traffic violations. Well, the traffic actually belongs to the county anyway, but the ordinance violation. And they will try to get some money from you. Probably, in my guess, or my guesstimate would be probably around $400,000 a year because it will require a full staff by the county division to do that. But you can, and I'm sure Joe has been looking into that possibility, what that will cost. Not closing the court would also save the cost of transferring the electronic case files to all these places in the county. And that estimate is somewhere around half a million dollars for the computer program that needs to be generated. So anyway, I'm not sure exactly what you've done, but, you know, I'm hoping and I'm hopeful that maybe we can move forward and do something, okay? Because, as you know, I was elected. My term by law is four years. I'm required to have a staff. I'm required to have facilities, all of which we have now. And along with all the savings that will be saved will be also the truancy court. And that being, as you can ask any of the administrators at the, at the school, is very successful. And they'd like to have it continued and there is no option available to them to continue with a truancy court, notwithstanding the financing that you're willing to provide to them instead of the court. So for four years at least, I'll be here. And if I have to be here, in any event, I will continue to handle that part of it anyway. So that's all I have to say, all right? Thank you for listening to me.
For many of the reasons that you just articulated and for other reasons that have nothing to do with money, if I had to be the tiebreaker and vote, I would have voted in favor of the court.
I appreciate it.
Because I think it's just a fundamental, essential service of the government, just like the police are.
Well, as we said before, I mean, you know, we are 36,000 plus people and we deserve to have a court, you know, and if it takes changes in leadership, that's what it will take eventually. So, you know, I'm comfortable with my position trying to save the court for the town. And, but thank you very much for your support and the support of the councilmen who voted for, I guess, with some motion at this point. All right?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mike Johns, 2503 West Lincoln Highway, Maryville. I'm here to thank the police department of Maryville. About three weeks ago, I had a break-in at the house. And this gentleman or not a gentleman, took quite a bit of jewelry, expensive watch, some rings and about 40 or 50 pieces of jewelry of my wife's. The main one was some heirlooms that her father bought when she was 12-year-old. My wife is 57. That's one that hurt her so bad that, that was taken. And some other heirlooms even of mine that my father bought me when I was young. And the good detective work of Detective Van Wright and found every piece of that. And I want to thank the chief and all the police departments here that we have, that of their good work. And I thank you, chief, of having a good police department. And I thank the town council for giving me time to do this, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Moving on tonight to town announcements. We have next town council meetings Tuesday, May 14th. The Juneteenth celebration, as we talked about earlier, is on June 15th at 6:30 at the Community Center. The fireworks show will be on July 3rd, just after dusk, at the Maryville High School parking lot behind the school. The July 4th parade is on July 4th, of course, at 11:00 a.m., starting at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and then proceeding south down Broadway to 80th Place. And the job fair this year is going to be on July 24th from 11:30 to 2:30 at the Community Center. Shall I entertain a motion for adjournment?
Uh, announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have an announcement. They are, we are having, not we, but the Maryville Community School Corporation in partnership with the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, will be having a free parent resource fair that will be Thursday, May 9th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. They will have vendors there, health and community resources, summer recreation and educational camps, summer reading enrichment, tutoring resource services, youth empowerment resources and social services. For more information, visit the school corporation website at www.mvsc.k12.in.us. This is put on by epic empowering parents in our community. That is all.
I'd like to have a thank you. I'd like to thank the town of Maryville for our autism T-shirts. This is Autism Awareness Month. Given me being a grandmother of a child that has autism, I thank you.
Shall I entertain a motion for adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.